All right, we're going to call the order. Board of Education meeting. Call the order, Board of Education meeting, 7 o'clock. Secretary, who take attendance?
All board members are present.
Okay, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first order is public comment. First, we have Stephanie Potier. Potier? I'm going to get it right at BIA, you won't get it right now.
Good evening, Board of Education. I'm Stephanie Potier, French teacher at West Hills Middle School. Bienvenue, welcome. I'm positive that this word was spoken in the Detroit River region in 1701 when Cadillac first settled Fort Ponchartrain de Detroit. The first settlers were fur traders, and the hot commodity at the time is beaver pelts. They exchanged them with the Native Americans. These habitants worked hard to establish businesses and develop farmland along the strait de Detroit. At present, there's an active French Chamber of Commerce here in Detroit, and according to Business France, approximately 145 automotive subsidiaries are located in Michigan, including among them Forestia, Delmia, and Dassault, and Vario. Additionally, there are many other French companies engaged in varied fields. These companies rely on people who are bilingual in French and English. According to France Amérique magazine, 18,700 jobs were created by French enterprises in Michigan. My goal in addressing you tonight is to provide a fresh perspective regarding our French-language learning community and our collaborative efforts to create authentic language, cultural connections, and experiences. Additionally, I would also like to share some findings with you that support the importance of maintaining and growing our French language program to meet the demands of the global economy happening in Michigan. I've worked passionately to create a community of French language learners who share their skills in learning with our greater community. One of the highlights this past fall, my students were at rendezvous, performing and sharing their language, their dance, and their song, and they were able to meet the Conseil General de France. He greeted them, and they shook hands. He commented on their performance and told them how enthusiastically they were performing. It was their opportunity to use their French with an official from France, and you can't imagine, he said to them, "You made me think of my childhood memories, and you can't imagine how that made them feel. What a memory for them." I believe in authentic experiences and purposeful, skill-based learning in our language acquisition community. Challenge and rigor are rewarded with engaging, purposeful, and rewarding authentic experiences. I have a passion for creating curriculum and bringing unique and creative learning opportunities to my students. I remember my first welcome back day, and I remember Dr. Glass, that you shared our mission and the mission of igniting the passion and providing a world-class experience for our students. I took this to heart. I live and breathe French. Our middle school French program has been supported and validated by Alliance Française de Québec, French and Canadian officials in the government, storyteller Jeanneau Picourt, musicians Les Trois Bouffons, French businesses and organizations, heritage groups, and academic language associations. In addition to supporting our students' growth, they have afforded me professional growth in learning as well. We all support French heritage, culture, and language. I'm grateful for their support, inspiration, and encouragement. Due to the structure of the language program in the district and my personal determination, I found myself paddling against the current to build the program. I like to call the brave souls who take up the paddles and jump in the canoe with me, les voyageurs. They are my students and a very active and dedicated group of French club members who meet on B-Day Fridays to share language, food, song, dance, games, activities, and culture. Being a voyageur becomes part of these students' middle school identity. It gives them a sense of belonging, and I've witnessed their social-emotional growth. New members are always welcome throughout the year. I've participated in the language task force, and my colleague Holly Hammerly and I have consistently advocated in the past for structure change which allows language choice to be more equitable. The current structure of Spanish in the elementary levels encourages this language as a default language in sixth grade. If as a district we are truly globally-minded, we need to reflect that in our choice of languages from the beginning. French is an official language of many organizations, international organizations. Canada is one of the largest trading partners of the United States. I have had the honor of collaborating with Delegats de Québec Martin Dion and Jean-François Huld, who have communicated that trade across the border with Quebec is on the rise, especially with aerospace, automotive, aluminum, and paper-based industries. Bilateral trade between Quebec and Michigan reached 3.9 billion in 2017, and bilateral trade between Quebec and the U.S. reached 71 billion last year.
Just to let you know, we usually have five minutes, you know, for public comments, so if you could just go to your conclusion.
Wrap it up.
Yeah, wrap it up.
Okay. They're excited about these initiatives. My students call me madame. They know without a question that I have a passion for sharing the language and culture. I've developed and launched a scholarship for Alliance Française, and I hope that one day they will have the opportunity to apply for it. We do not want to see our program in the community that we've created perish due to structural problems. We have enlisted the support of the French community over seven years. That I've been a teacher in the district, nevertheless, the decision is in your hands as to whether we light the match and watch it burn, or you look at ways to reconstruct our language program in order that students can have the choice and opportunity to acquire and enjoy the French language, culture, and heritage. It's about the bigger picture. Outside the school walls, into the community, across the borders, and across the oceans, we have precious artifacts that we are charged to handle with care. Their future is in our hands, and it's priceless. I'm asking your support to allow our students' choice and to keep the opportunities that a French education offers open. I share with my students all the time, this is our motto, vouloir, c'est pouvoir, on y va. And it means, where there's a will, there genuinely is a way, and let's go. Thank you, thank you so much. I've put together a folder for you with some information that I think is pertinent, and my job as a teacher, I feel, is to inform people and help them make good decisions for their future. Thank you.
So, last Monday during a study session, Learning Services in conjunction with the three middle school principals gave a presentation about the potential future for middle school scheduling and programming. Three options were presented, and the board at that time felt that the third option needed to be further explored and built out. Given that decision, I, as the elected representative of the BHA, am obligated to raise the concerns of my membership. So, we take it back. Back on February 19th, Scott Wolf, who is the Cal of the music department, gave a presentation to you, so you all remember that, that just outlined the concerns of the music department. So, I'm going to just highlight a few of those since this is information that you've already heard. So, since cutting fourth grade band and orchestra, the music department has seen a decline in the performance abilities of our students. Seventh, eighth grade students are finding it more difficult to compete with students from neighboring schools for honors group spots. A student that graduates eighth grade through BHS will have almost half the amount of time in music as compared to students from Troy, Berkeley, Ockhamus, Ferndale, et cetera. We are behind comparable schools when it comes to participation in state honors ensembles. For example, we had three students at the high school level qualify for the Michigan Youth Arts Ensembles from band and orchestra this year. While Troy had 14, Ann Arbor hereon had 26, Ann Arbor Pioneer had 21, Novi had 12, and Ockhamus had 11. And according to multiple research, proficiency in music leads to higher test scores. And if you look deeper into the word proficiency, that was also the rationale that was used to justify the potential elimination of all world languages except for Spanish in options two and three in that presentation. Students that would want to study Chinese, German, or French at the middle school level would have to look to outsource education and enroll online. From a brain research perspective, as seen in groups such as the National Equity Project, the most important component of learning is connection. Students need rich discussion and opportunity to construct meaning collaboratively. Active engagement is necessary for learning, and all learning has an emotional base that online classes cannot provide. Also, has consideration been given to the following points: that the World Language Department offers a rich and robust curriculum that focuses on preparing students linguistically and culturally to become global citizens with the disposition to inquire about the world, seek multiple perspectives, and take reasonable and responsible action on issues of global importance in an increasingly interconnected society. In French, Chinese, and German, the middle school and high school teachers all regularly offer overseas experiences as well as clubs that enrich students' experiences and expand their global competencies. Without French, Chinese, and German, students would lose access to the unique practices and perspectives of German, Austrian, Chinese, French, African, Swiss, Belgian, and Canadian cultures. Option three could also change the way we do business at the middle school entirely, meaning that the current team model might no longer be possible from a scheduling perspective. And what are the benefits of the middle school team model? The middle school concept with a dedicated team of teachers is able to address the whole child's needs by allowing for all areas to be addressed through instruction and team planning. And how does the team accomplish this? By discussing the strengths and needs of students and how the team as a community of teachers can best help recognize and further develop those strengths while also supporting those needs and helping students grow. By having conferences throughout the year with students and parents. By meeting with counselors, administrators, and support staff such as special education, school social workers, and psychologists to discuss student needs. By creating amazing cross-curricular content that helps engage students, meet students' needs, and creates a holistic and interconnected learning experience for our students, just to name a few things. Finally, as a whole, our elective and unified arts teachers are enduring incredible class sizes and overall caseloads. Many must travel between buildings, which brings its own challenges such as lack of proper facilities and resources, along with limited prep time and the high expectations that are placed upon all BH teachers. There needs to be some intervention into this unsustainable workload. But ultimately, we are all here for the same reason, the students. So, if large-scale programmatic and scheduling changes are being discussed, and the voices of those that would be impacted most must be lifted up and included. As the board knows, the BHA is always willing to engage in conversation and be a part of making this district the absolute best place for our students. Thank you for your time and consideration.
So, I just want to kind of give everyone an update on the superintendent search process. So, the board has formed two task forces, one group of three to work on recommending a superintendent search firm, and one group of three to study best practices in timing and process. Our goal on this point is the following: to hire a search firm by our next board meeting on 5/23, work with the search firm on our timing and process. The search firm will be critical as they do most of the heavy lifting with not only input from the board in type of candidate, but input from the community, teachers, and other stakeholders involved. Our goal is to be as transparent as possible. In the event we do not have a superintendent in place by 7:01, we, as a board, are in negotiations with Tina Kostick to take over as acting superintendent. We, as a board, will discuss in more detail and vote at a later date, or discuss backfilling her current role as well. With that, we go to Rob's. I don't have anything else with that, Rob Superintendent report.
Okay, thank you. And just to tag on to that, obviously, I wanted to just take a minute personally, especially with so many here, to acknowledge that, you know, you received the news of my resignation very recently, and I appreciate the outpouring of well wishes and thoughts. And just to reiterate for those who may be viewing, or those who aren't aware of my motivation, simply, my wife has received a phenomenal position offer in New York City, and for most of my career, my whole life and career, my family has followed me. This was an opportunity for my wife, who is a little younger than I am and is right in the spot in her career where she could secure an opportunity that was the pinnacle of her career, to embrace that, and for me to embrace that along with her and embrace a new chapter. So, once we made the difficult decision to relocate, then it became incumbent upon me to find work. So, I looked at superintendencies that were available in the New York City area. I was fortunate to secure one in a fine school district in that area, and the Eastchester School District in Westchester County, and accepted that position and notified our board once that was finalized. And so, it's an exciting new chapter, but I want you to know personally how hard it's going to be for me to no longer be here, because I've been here nine years and have enjoyed every moment of it. We've accomplished some amazing things together, and we share the same values together, and we've built something incredible here. And I know that that will continue, because when you build something the right way, it becomes, you know, embedded together and co-owned, and it becomes something larger than any one person, and it moves on. And I know you have a board here who will do the right thing and who will select a superintendent who will be able to lead you to the next thing. And I find a different skill set or a complementary skill set that'll be just what we need here in Bloomfield Hills to move forward, and I'm very confident of that, and I'm confident in their commitment to doing that. And so, I want to thank you very much and for your understanding, your patience, and your well wishes. And please know I will be fully engaged for the remainder of this school year, and we'll see through everything that is on our list-to-do list as we get through this next couple months and wind up this school year. So, thank you all very much, and I'm going to leave my report at that. Thanks. Don't make it any harder.
Yeah, well, keep in mind, this is obviously not Rob's last board meeting, so as a board and community, you know, appropriate, you know, as we get closer, you know, to obviously your end date, you know, we will celebrate, you know, all of your accomplishments and recognize you, you know, more formally at a later board meeting. With that, we will go to consent agenda.
All right. I move that the Board of Education approve the recommendations detailed in the consent agenda as follows. Request to approve minutes of a study session, April 18th, a regular meeting of April 18th, a study session of April 22nd, a closed session of April 22nd, and a special meeting of April 30th. Also, request that we approve HR action for Assistant Superintendent, of the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and Labor Relations as presented.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Consent agenda passes. General discussion. Rob, IA Joint Steering Committee update.
So, the International Academy Joint Steering Committee is going to be meeting again in June. Now, as you know, the meetings are open, and this would be our second open meeting. So, they, that meeting agenda is being put together now. I think the first task of that committee is going to be to look at the Joint Steering Committee agreement as it exists currently, and to determine with a subcommittee that is now looking at that agreement whether any modifications should be made to it or need to be made to it per the will of the 13 districts who are involved, and bring some of those recommendations to our June, early June meeting for open discussion, and we'll just move it from there. But it is progressing along.
Report of Board Pol-
Questions?
Questions?
So, Rob, you're referring to the looking, the committee that's looking at the consortium agreement?
Yes.
Okay, not the, which includes the JSC structure within it?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Well, yeah, and when the June meeting, at what point do you think that you'll be at for the June meeting for people that want to come to the JSC open meeting in June? How far along will the?
I think it will be an initial discussion, because the subcommittee has not yet even met. It's taken a list of suggested things to look at and given it to our attorney, and they're all contemplating that as a subcommittee. I expect that those will be pulled together into some list of draft, you know, here are the, here are the things, and here are some things that we agree might need to be looked at, and here are some, our attorney, I think, will be present at that meeting to be able to advise, you know, here would be one way to address that, you know, here would be another way to address that. I think I would advise that realistically, you know, when you have that many districts, it's going to take us some time to go through that agreement and address all the things that we even initially gathered, which were a number of things, you know, what the composition of that board should be. Because traditionally, that board has been strictly Assistant Superintendents or Principals or the occasional Superintendent. And one of the suggestions, I think, was to, that came at a public comment at our first JSC meeting that was open, and also came through the list of others who said, you know, here's some suggestions, is to look at whether that should be comprised of board members or should be a different kind of representatives. And that's something we've never considered before, but it's not going to be, I think, an easy, you know, conversation. I think it'll be an ongoing conversation of what would be the implications of that, and so, I think this is going to take, it's going to be an ongoing, might take six months or a year to kind of go through the whole thing, but that's okay. We'll do it publicly.
Which is understandable, but at the last JSC meeting, the goal was mentioned of having the document ready to be looked at in, at least in draft form. Is that timeline not realistic anymore?
I never felt that was realistic.
I didn't either.
Yeah, so.
It sounds like the 1920 school year for the IA will be under the current structure, and anything, sounds like that's going to be changed, would be for 2021 or beyond even.
Well, I don't, it's really too early to tell, but I-
I mean, for 1920, we'd have to make a decision in the next 30 days.
A little bit like a, yeah, it looks like a little bit like a funnel. You could do it even mid-year, you know, you could change it anytime. But when I say it looks like a funnel, I mean, you've got this, tell us anything that you think we ought to look at, and some things will go, okay, that's not anything that's a big deal, you know, we'll tweak it or we'll leave it. Other things might take some more discussion. We're going to get it down to a list of items that I think will require more discussion, and as we do that, we'll just take that time it needs. And it's even possible you could do like a hybrid where you could, you could make some of the easy changes and just tweak them and vote on them and have them be effective immediately, and then others that take more time just take more time, and then you revise the JSC agreement at that time. So, all those things would be possible. But I do think, you know, given the, I'm just being candid, it just takes time to get everybody together with these 13 districts. It's a lot of schedules, conflicts, and then getting people, even getting a quorum is difficult.
Superintendent, and then you've got 13 school boards also.
Yeah, yeah. And, and even, thank you, that's a really good point, Howard, because even if, let's say, everybody on that joint steering committee felt a certain way, now because that model is, now, you know, now it's something like that that would be that fundamental of a change, you're going to go back to your boards, and then going to have to have study sessions with your boards, and then your, you know, so it further slows it down.
That's over 100 people.
Yeah, it's just going to take time, but we're committed to it, and what's really great is it's an open meeting. So, anything that happens is happening in the open, and any subcommittee reports are just like our subcommittee reports here, and I think that's real progress.
Sorry, quick question. Do you know if the other superintendents are still committed to composing the JSC right now? Because I know that's something that's not in writing nor has it been voted on.
It's not in writing, but that's, that's been the, the understanding, is that because we now are viewing it from a legal perspective as a delegate body, right? Right now, the way the agreement reads and the way that we've agreed to interpret it not, is not the way we've been doing it, but the way that the document reads, it is a sort of a delegate body, right? Boards are saying, you've got a representative delegating some board authority to the JSC. And the rationale for not having that be frontline assistants like an Assistant Superintendent and having it be superintendents, everybody that I spoke with agreed, yeah, it should be superintendents, because if something gets discussed, you don't have that extra layer, right? Where, like, I'm going to call Paul. Hey, Paul, we need to set up a meeting because, we do that all the time, right? And you're going to have a more reliable system. So, yes, although I will say it's very possible, you know, you could have a meeting where a superintendent cannot attend, right? But to have a quorum, it's best that they send a frontline assistant. So, you have a commitment, a verbal commitment from everybody, yep, we need to have this be superintendents for now. That's the best if you can do that. But I can't guarantee 100% of the time it will always be a superintendent. It might be a frontline occasionally. And I think it's a fascinating question, should it be?
But that would be written into the consortium agreement, whatever the decision-
I would think so. I think it's more, yeah, more specificity is better. And if you decided you thought it should be board members, you know, delegates, set of board members and not superintendents hypothetically, you know, then that's certainly going to be written in.
I don't think that job description was in the consortium agreement originally, just said a representative.
It should be now.
Well, it should be. It should be. Could be.
All right, I'm going to move on to, right now, update on the Report of Board Policy Committee. Lisa, you want to give an update?
The Board Policy Committee met yesterday, and we are continuing to work on some of the sections of the policy that we passed in part last time. We went through the rest of the changes that Jennifer and I had as new board members. This process began before we were seated on the board, and we sort of honed in on some of the parking lot issues. Some are going to warrant longer discussions. Those will happen when we have more time in the future. Some were easy to incorporate. They were a word here or there. So, I think it's in really good shape, actually. I've got a lot farther than I thought we would so far with the changes. Anyone else have?
Yeah. So, the meeting was on Tuesday, not yesterday, and those parking lot issues, we said that really they were whole board discussions. So, I didn't, there might have been some of the issues that we were kicking to the policy committee to have, you know, further discussions, but a number of them were the whole board needs to have a discussion, either at a retreat or a study session.
Okay, all right. Very good. Any other questions, comments? Next is the Superintendent Search Timeline Task Force. Jackie?
Yep, and I'm on the, this task force with Howard and Cynthia, and we met earlier this week and discussed several things. First was the historical background of our district, and so Cynthia gave us a background of different searches that we have run in our district and the timelines for those searches. Also mentioned some, a letter from Bob Lux to Martin Brook about if we wanted to run an RFP process and those recommendations. And also in, in the notes, there was a letter from Mindy Nathan, a former school board member, that had some excellent advice for future searches with lessons learned. And one of the important insights we had is that while we have two different task forces, one is on timeline and one on search firm, realistically, that the search firm will have a lot to do with that facilitation and the timeline on the process, so, and also facilitating things like when we're developing the profile, whether or not we want only traditional or non-traditional candidates, all of that discussion will largely be facilitated by the search firm. So, there are some things that we can put in place as we're selecting the search firm, but that is a very important decision. And there are some issues or other lessons learned that came up from various searches that we discussed. We discussed the Awesome Search that came up with Rob Glass, and how many search firms applied, and, and also the process of selecting the search firm and whether the whole board was involved. In some places, that's the case, and in some cases, there would be a subset, some is full board and some is a subset depending upon as we go forward. And so, we also had Howard provided an environmental scan of some area benchmark districts that are also going through searches, for example, Birmingham and their district and- For example, Birmingham and their district and some of the insights that our neighbors gained through their, their searches. And also the state superintendent's search and the way that that was conducted. And so basically, we came up with a list of draft, kind of a draft process that we felt that we should go through as we move forward. The first is, as President Colen already mentioned, is to have an idea and select an interim superintendent because it is very likely we will need an interim because of the June 30th deadline of when Rob will be transitioning. We should, as a board, one of the hardest things to do is schedule meetings to get all the work done. So we need to immediately, because of the timeline, start to schedule out these meetings so we know when we will be able to work. Otherwise, it's, if we wait too long, we won't be able to find time to meet. And without the next step, the third step, is we need to start to discuss and actually select the search firm criteria. So what is the criteria that we need before we go through the process? Because that will really make a difference. If we're all on board on what the criteria is, then if, as we go through, so that's three. Select, discuss and select the criteria. The fourth one is to develop the process, how we will go forward to select the search firm based upon the criteria. And this is really important because if we're all on board with what the criteria should be, this isn't real, if someone's going to go through as we, if we put out either an RFP or invitations, then it's important that whoever is involved in the interviews has to go to all of the interviews, you know? And so that is really important. But if, if we have individuals who can't attend every, depending upon how many candidates we have in the short, the long list and the shortlist, if we have a clear criteria, then there will be people that'll be more comfortable knowing that, well, this is the criteria they're using, I can't attend all of them. So we could have a smaller portion of the board that would actually go through that.
And to be clear, you're talking about interviewing the search firms right now.
This is just a search firm.
Right, not interviewing the candidates.
Nope. This is just the search firm.
There's a search firm phase, and then there's the candidate phase. And now all we're talking about is the search firm because the candidate phase will be able to get through the search firm.
Yeah, this is just the search firm. So, yeah, there's a lot of work to do, guys. And so after we put out either RFP or the invitations, then the seventh part would be reviewing the applications based upon the criteria and reduce it to three to five for interviewing, then do the interviewing. This is where, if you're going to do the interviewing, you need to be at every single one of those meetings. And then discuss and select one to use. So those are some of the, that's our draft, you know, of what we think that we need to go through.
I'm kind of unclear about this too. I know you just asked, Jennifer, but this process is to select, as a board, three to five search firms.
Yeah.
And this is just going to be a board decision. This is not going to.
The state superintendent's search process had 50 applications and they had an area down first to 40, and then select five to interview. That's a lot. For Rob's, the one that resulted in Rob, there were nine search firms that applied. So there's, it's a really important decision, what search firm you use. And so, yeah, that's the first thing to do and it's a lot of work, but.
Over the last week, I've talked to a number of different districts around the area. And Cynthia obviously has the history. It is almost as important which search firm you pick in terms of getting versus the actual candidate you end up with, the superintendent. The search firm guides a lot of this process so that that's a really important decision we have to make.
So I have given the nine proposals that were submitted to us when we did the search in 2009 to Mark, who's heading the process and working towards selecting a firm. So just, just so you can get a sense of the wide variety, that you can, that the cost varies widely and the way they deliver their services can, is very different. They're not apples to apples. And I thought it might be helpful just to have a chance to look through what was submitted to us last time around because most of the same firms will be likely to, to apply to us again.
So just to get a sense of perspective, how long did it take approximately last time to narrow down the search firms and to ultimately pick one?
To narrow down the search firms? I believe that they had to submit in late October and we chose one so that they started in January.
And then how long does the bid have to stay open after you, after you post a bid for search firms? How long does it stay open?
The policy changed and it no longer requires an RFP.
Oh.
That's why I said RFP or invitation. You can do it either way.
So, but in any event, it takes a matter of months.
So, no, I think the window for.
Not necessarily. I think you can put it out there, you can probably get responses to requests within a month.
But then to narrow those responses down and interview all of the ones that were interested?
So once, once they have submitted proposals, that process to go through them and make the selection doesn't have to take that long. It can be done within a couple of weeks, you can get through the process.
The sample RFPs we were looking at were anywhere from four weeks to sending out the RFP to firm selection, that was the shorter end, to like 12 weeks. So it just depends on. But I'm thinking when we have to interview, when we, you know, that can slow down because, like you said, we have to be present for all the interviews. So how, is it realistic to think that we can have this decision made by the next board meeting?
Well, I think, again, if you, if you put an aspirational goal, and, you know, we obviously, you know, I'll send out in terms of getting dates on our calendars, I mean.
But I'm just nervous about saying it publicly if it's not realistic.
Well, actually, we'll go into, let's go to Mark's report.
May 20 seconds impossible from what we've learned. Jen, Lisa and I met on Sunday at my office and we looked at six different RFPs that were used previously from school districts around the country. Subsequently, we were able to get our hands on the one that was used by this district previously, but it wasn't incorporated on Sunday into our thought process. And to summarize.
The overlap was 100%, though, with the 100% of those six.
To summarize, if you were to break it down into two categories, we were trying to put on paper, you know, what we would want to communicate about this district to search firms and then what we would want from the search firms, what we would want them to communicate to us relative to maybe their abilities, the process they might use, their experience. And there were several other things, I think a list of what A through R or something like that, that we came up with because the RFPs, they were very formal requests. And our goal was to try and put together something that the responses, we'd be able to put them side by side and say, here's part A, here's part B, here's part C, here's part D. But we were thinking in terms of an RFP. Subsequently, we were reminded that the change in the board policy about two years ago no longer requires RFP for services, which would allow us to potentially move forward a little bit quicker in the process. Doesn't mean it would be hasty in any way or any rush to a judgment, but it'll allow us, instead of putting out an RFP, be the possibility of sending out invitations. The three of us have not had a chance to confer completely on that, but this would be a good time to have that discussion. But I think in terms of what Jackie said, if we went with the, whether an RFP or invitations, first process would be to notify people that, hey, you can submit a quote proposal, whatever, to us. I think we should discuss whether we want to publicize, we would want you to respond to us at least relative to these several criteria, whether it's the A through R that we were going through, or maybe it's a little bit more informal in the terms of an invitation. We then have to receive those, we have to discuss those, we have to go through the interview process and then vote. When I heard May 23rd stated as a date, I was thinking for the notification, maybe impossible to get this done by May 20.
He didn't say what year.
Yeah.
No, I think that's a good goal.
In fairness, I think the goal is, is as a group, that we want to make sure that, you know, we, you know, we do what we can to move this along as quickly as possible. Now, if May 23rd obviously is unrealistic, then that's fine as, as a group, but just as long as we, you know, for the community, we're keeping the process moving.
Absolutely. Right, so somebody said a moment ago that perhaps the most important part of the process is selecting the right search firm. And then having them guide us through the next step. So what I'm about to say, I'm not speaking on behalf of the committee, I'm just sharing my own thoughts. But my own thoughts would be that the committee get back together and put together a shorter version of what we were working on in forms of an invitation. And that invitation then be posted on our website, sent out to whoever, circulated any way we can to see what we get back in response. And it can be sent to all the search firms we know about. Anybody who wants, can email, we can send it to other districts, other people, whoever might cause a search firm to respond to us. And let it be known, you know, we prefer to receive responses by a particular day, but we're not locked into something firm the way you are with an RFP. And then we, as a board, would say, we're going to start reviewing those on this date. We're going to circulate them to all of us so we can review them. We're going to have a discussion and then we're going to figure out who we're going to bring in for interviews. That can be an accelerated process, but I do think we want search for, to give them the time to put together something thoughtful. Because some of the things we're asking for were in terms of, if it was an RFP, prior experiences, prior searches they did. And while we would want this to be a nationwide search for potential search firms, it's going to take them a little while to learn about us and, you know, what our needs may be and things like that. There may be inquiries to us so that they can give us good information. But I would recommend that we go the invitation route rather than the RFP route, just because of the flexibility that it would give the seven of us in making a decision.
So what I'm hearing you say, Mark, is the only substantive difference between an official RFP process and an invitation process was that it doesn't lock us into deadlines for receiving proposals. Is that right?
Wouldn't lock us into a deadline for receiving proposals or, and how we respond to questions, how questions are, we could do it the way we wanted. So.
Cynthia?
So a couple of things. I think it's going to be important for our board to have a couple of conversations before we start down this path. We need to decide, are we doing a national search? If we are doing a national search, maybe we ought to be trying to contact, there is a National Association of Search Professionals that we may want to be sure that they get notification. We, I think at some point need to have a conversation. Are we, are we looking for an instructional leader or are we considering a more unconventional? That board has had those conversations before. You get people who come out of the corporate world or military. I'm just saying, we need to have those conversations as we are trying to inform a search firm what it is we're looking for. I think there's some big conversations that we need to consider in the process.
We can test a very wide net, see what it brings in and then say, hey, we got some people who are, you know, professionals, some people who are in the academic world, not that they're not professionals, but just using, you know, some of the category and figure out what's best for us from what we see.
So among the nine firms that you have the responses there toward, there are some from across the country. And two or three of them are basically headhunters who are not necessarily about school professionals. But, not that they couldn't be, but they have, they cast a broader net. And so I'm just posing to the board to think through some of those, those issues. And, you know, do we want to make the opportunity and be confident that we are casking the net? If we're trying to do a national search, be able to reach those firms that would have two things. They need to be able to have the networks and have the experience that we know that they have had good experience in placing superintendents, finding the right matches, and people who stay in the job for a while. But typically, what has been most helpful, what I've watched over the years with my colleagues, is they need to have a base here in Michigan or within the same time zone. It's a lot harder if they're not in the same time zone when you're trying to schedule meetings and get face to face. And we can use FaceTime or whatever kind of Zoom meetings, but we do need some FaceTime. We want people to, we want them to have enough, deep enough staffing so that they can come in and have meetings with our community and with our, with our, with our staff, with different constituencies, to be sure that we're getting a school district profile that is true to where we, what we are today. I think those are really important pieces that we know that we're thinking about.
Exactly what we discussed the other day in terms of putting together the A through R or whatever it was, it was the whole gamut of all those concerns. Just a sample selection, there were some inquiries there in terms of, are you pulling from an existing database or are you looking for other candidates? We only pull from this database. What will you do to find other candidates? What's your familiarity with Michigan's education law, Open Meetings Act, things like that? It was the whole gamut. And I think the three of us need to meet again and narrow that down, circulate it amongst ourselves. And once we're comfortable that this is the invitation, assuming we go the invitation route, let's start circulating it, whether it's the National Association of Search Firms or whoever, but whoever we can think of, there's no harm in sending an email.
Howard? Sorry, Howard?
Trying to, this is the first time really, the two committees, because this just occurred over the last week, that both committees have really gotten together and talked. As Jackie was going through, criteria number three that our committee yesterday discussed was start to discuss and select search firm criteria. So I would suggest, and I'm not sure what the other committee believes, but our committee was saying that we really go through that A to R, if it sounds like, and really narrow that down together, what those are, and then cast that net based upon those, those search firm criteria.
What the three of us discovered in synthesizing these RFPs into something we liked was that embedded in the better RFPs were not just what do we want to know from you, but there was a list of this is how essentially we are going to grade you. And so we learned what those factors are and a lot of them make sense. And we should certainly brainstorm together on a good list that we're all happy with.
Before we send it out.
Correct.
With every method we do to go out to the public.
And we don't need to state the criteria. In the invitation, we just need to know what they are.
I think it's, I think it's clear. I mean, obviously, this just recently happened. We set up the two task force. Task force have done a lot of work to date since, you know, it's been a short period of time. And I agree, we will schedule time as a complete group to go through, you know, as a group, you know, in terms of the invitation, the process, and, you know, we'll talk through that over the next several weeks. So that obviously is going to happen.
And the two outstanding issues, that's one, which is the criteria. But the other one is, I think, together, the two chairmen sit down and really lay out a timeline for this phase one, not phase two, just the selection, getting to, from where we are today to selecting of a search firm and getting them on board. What is the timeline? What meetings do we have to have so we can start scheduling meetings with Leanne and ourselves through Doodle or whatever? So we know, so that would allow us to know, you know, President Colan said, you know, we'll have a decision by third week of May. Well, what is that right date? Laying out that timeline, I think, would really give us that.
Let me make a suggestion in that regard. Maybe what we should do is have a study session amongst the seven of us in the next week or so to go over what the three of us put together, narrow it down to what we'll, I'll call for the moment, an invitation. And that way, on the 23rd, we can come back to the table and say, yes, we vote to send out this invitation and get the invitation at least out of here by the 23rd. Given the amount of information, and we may decide to go with a narrow, something narrow that just says, hey, give us your best shot. Or maybe this A through R, who knows, once the six, or seven of us start talking. But get it out, but if it's a lot of information, I imagine we're going to want to give people, you know, three, four weeks to respond because we might want an awful lot of data. Or we might decide, you know, hey, if these guys are professionals and this is what they do, they should have it already prepackaged and pretty much, pretty close to ready to go.
Right, for the time.
But, right.
Yeah, well, and remember what we did when Ingrid resigned and we knew we had to select a new board member is we kind of set like a two-week period because we were up against a deadline. And basically, everybody had to make themselves available during that time, or we selected it so that people were available in order to be able to do that. I think that's, that's really incumbent on us to do that and because otherwise, it'll be very difficult. But up against, I think, according to what you're saying, I like the idea of the 23rd and then putting it out maybe for a month or six weeks, you think? How long before they would reply?
That's what it looks like.
We'll figure out whether next Thursday, the seven of us can.
We'll have a special meeting, talk about it, you know, firm up the timeline. But again, obviously, we've done a lot of work to date and just kind of combine the work and then kind of work through this.
Our other committee will meet again. Try and take the document we were working on and try and get some consensus amongst us to bring to the seven of us so at least we're not starting. us to bring to the seven of us so at least we're not starting from scratch or starting with something that the three of us at least don't have a recommendation on.
But I would suggest for him, Rob, if LeAnn can put out a doodle so we can start setting up a.
I'll work with Rob, I'm getting that also.
All right, I just want to add to that. I know Cynthia spoke to our values and what we might be looking for being reflected in the search firm that we choose, but we are also bound by some statutory criteria. So it is just any old person, I mean, there are certain state mandated criteria that this person would have to meet. Right?
All right. Any other, any other questions before we go to comments?
I'll just say that I have my notebooks from both, from two searches here, and I can leave them in LeAnn's office. So people want to come in and look through them and sort of get a sense of what the kind of stuff that the search firms can provide to us in terms of, it was pretty, there was a lot of material that was given to us.
I would just say as a footnote to what Jackie said, all the emails or the letters or the memos that Jackie was referring to were all from 10 years ago. This is all, you know, Cynthia digging through her archives and pulling out information.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Appreciate, appreciate the work of all, you know, all of my colleagues on the board. We've spent a lot of time to date and I will get, I'll work with LeAnn on getting some calendar days for all of us to get together.
Much appreciated.
Okay? That, we will go to board business. First is request to approve 2019-20 Oakland School Budget.
I move that the Board of Education adopt this attached resolution in support of the fiscal year 1920 proposed budget for Oakland Schools.
We have support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. 10B, request to approve student liaison. Do I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education adopt the student liaison to the board proposal as presented.
Support?
Support.
Okay. Discussion?
I think this motion is grossly premature. We've had very cursory conversation amongst the seven of us. It's very unclear to me what the role of these students would be. We're an elected body. We are established by statute. There are certain requirements that we have to live up to. We have specific fiduciary obligations, and I don't think we can just pick to add other people to this body. We don't have that authority. If we're going to have a liaison group, fine, but what does that mean? And I don't think we've defined that to my comfort level yet to be able to say, yes, we had part of a discussion on it. And frankly, I would be interested to know what the incoming superintendent would have to say about this.
So getting, you know, some background. So I've, so this has been going on for three to four months. We've, you know, had a committee. I know at one of our board meetings, it was, it was suggested to put together three options, pros and cons. I've worked closely with a lot of, with principal at the high school, Rob, the superintendent. I've gotten some student feedback. I've reached out to other districts across the country and gotten feedback, put together that scenario. We've had multiple discussions as a board and a committee regarding this.
You had the exact proposal circulating over a month, soliciting feedback from all of us. Questions or feedback?
And just to give, just to give some feedback, so option three, which is what, you know, I've gotten feedback, I know Cynthia, who's on the committee with myself and Lisa, proposed, you know, option three. I know Charlie Hollerith, principal, proposed option three, which is really, it's a project-based student liaison that would be tasked with, if we had specific things, for example, a prime example came up the other night. We had a meeting, the school time task force meeting, looking at school times for the high school, and there were two students there. And one student spoke really eloquently about, you know, what the student position was and actually gave us a lot of thought in terms of, you know, what the impact would be. I know the students have had some impact in terms of, you know, the policy committee, and I've actually witnessed it over the last four to five months. I've gone to a lot of student meetings, gotten a lot of student feedback, and I think it's viable. And I've taken consideration from, feedback from this board, from students, from administration, from the superintendent in terms of what the model should look like. And I've outlined it, you know, I have a model here, like Lisa said, it's been circulating in terms of, you know, what it would look like. And that's why at the last meeting, we talked about it, and this meeting, that's why we're proposing it.
Trying to mediate between these two sides. A school board liaison really has two frames. There's from the student's side and there's from the board's side. And what President Colan has done very well has worked on the student's side of it in terms of criteria, the application process, and what the expectations of, is of the board of the student. What I don't see articulated, and I think Trustee Bank's concern, is from the board's side, what is the role and responsibility of that liaison? What will they be involved with, what they won't be involved with? We've alluded to it, but in the, in the motion, everything here is from the student's side, which is absolutely needed. But I think we need to articulate a little bit more, either in a meeting or in possibly just in writing, what we've already talked about.
Well, here's the problem though.
Let me just finish, I'm almost done. In terms of exactly what the expectations are and what, how that, that student liaison will interface or work with us, if that is articulated, Mark, would you be okay with that?
Yeah, I would want to know that quite a bit more. I mean, I'm concerned that this thing is rushing down a path a lot faster than it should be. We had a discussion amongst ourselves, so as not to create unreasonable expectation with the students, that we won't discuss this with the students until the board came up with exactly what you just talked about. And what I'm hearing is, yeah, we have the student sign in place after we discussed and informally agreed not to do that. Now we only have that sign in place. And I'm wondering what expectations have been created and perhaps unfairly, that we might not be able to meet at this point.
Well, I've, we've spent time, I actually, you know, I, we've, I've worked on a document, you know, a three-phase document, we've worked on in terms of what that expectation would be. It, you know, it came down from them coming to all of our meetings to kind of being just a project based, based on need. And that was feedback I've gotten from the board, and it's been, as Lisa said, it's been circulating for a couple of months in terms of.
It's not a lack of trying, but we have no board feedback.
I went to an all-day workshop by MASB on students on boards, and they're about to offer it again within the next 30 days. What I liked about what I heard from MASB and the outside resources they brought in, and they put a lot of resources on the MASB website about students on boards, was creating that avenue for more student feedback. I did suggest, and Paul did bring in someone from the Dearborn School District who has started down this path a little earlier than that. And what I liked about what they were doing in Dearborn and what I thought was important about the process of adding a student, better communication, and not necessarily on the board, was, and what I have trouble with about the proposal that's on the table, which asks for a GPA of 3.0. And what I think is important in our communication is to attract the voices of students who may be chronically tardy, who may be bullied, who may have 504s, may have behavior issues that we need to talk about what's going on, about climate and culture, and it not necessarily be attracting your student leadership kids who are the ones who are going to be, have the stronger GPAs. And the, the position that has been identified puts a lot of responsibility on the students. So I see why you're asking for a higher GPA for that kind of student for the role that you've identified, because it is, it is an additional burden on them to perform. I, my hope was that we would be, find a way of a listening student voice that would help us address the needs of those who are not the ones we always hear from.
Well, I, I think that's pretty presumptuous to assume that, well, because they may have a 504, that they wouldn't also have a 3.0 or higher.
So the process that I was looking for was to see that you could have your counselors, guidance counselors, teachers, your building administration, who could help invite kids whose different voices are helpful in affecting the climate and culture and relationship with it, with our school district, our board.
I think we wanted to give the autonomy to the students to elect their own voice and not come from their guidance counselors. I thought.
My, my point is that I don't think it should be about being a popularity contest, but about providing the feedback that helps change what's going on.
Well, that's also presumptuous to assume that students with 504s aren't popular.
Well, no, I think, you know, in terms of it's, I think, I think the point is that it's, it's, obviously, it's going to, it's a process to find that student to represent, you know, everyone for the project based that we're going to need a student. I, again, I have, you know, I've set up a committee, I've, you know, obviously researched with other districts. I presented to this board numerous times scenarios. I was questioned by one of my board members to come up with pros and cons, put together pros and cons, met with student groups, Superintendent Charlie, you know, me and Rob met with a student group the other day to get some feedback on, on start times. The student who came to the, you know, the students who came to the start time task force elegantly, not only did that, that student give feedback, but, you know, used an equity and inclusive hat and probably had more input than anyone in that meeting together, some of the members sitting in the audience was in that meeting. Again, getting to Lisa's point, it's not from lack of trying, it's not something that I've been trying to put, I've been trying to gather all feedback from the board members to incorporate it. It did start out as a process where they would be, you know, attending, you know, pretty much, you know, all of our meetings, and it's morphed into a project based with significant feedback from Charlie, significant feedback from people, you know, on this board. And I have not, you know, I'm offended when people say I've tried to ram this process. You know, just because a process takes three to four months and does not need to take three years, you know, I, you know, I stand behind this and I think it's invaluable, it would be invaluable as we're making decisions regarding music to have student voice, it's invaluable for start times, it's invaluable for a lot of things that we talk about. And that's why, you know, I'd strongly recommend that we approve this motion.
I, I think that. It's not about us either. Like that, I mean, it's really, when I'm listening to my fellow board members, I'm a little bit hesitant to bring a student into this until we've really flushed it out because we're the adults and we haven't decided, you know, fully. And I think that, you know, you've done so much great work, but I think until we, as the adults, really feel comfortable, it's not, we're not ready yet to bring a child into this.
I don't think they're a child. No, no, in fairness, I mean, let's give our students a lot more credit than calling them a child.
Until they are 18, they're children and we're adults. And so I don't hear that we are ready yet to be able to bring a student in to this role until we're all feeling comfortable. I, I, I'm not against it, but I think that we have to get ourselves ready first, and then once we're ready, then we bring a student into this. But I, I really, from what I'm hearing, I don't think we're ready yet, and I think that we should have a meeting on this and discuss it more fully and, and have time to get ourselves, I don't think there's a rush to a timeline here or any kind of a start date.
But when you have a document that's floating around, open for a month plus and nobody gives feedback, then you assume that no one has strong opinions on it.
I would say, I would say, Lisa, that means that we're not ready yet. Just because if no one opened it, it doesn't mean we have to say yes. If no one opened it, that means that.
I don't take it as if we're not ready, I take it as if we're just not responsive because we have nothing to add to it.
But you're hearing, but you're hearing now, but you're hearing now that isn't the case. It's actually people aren't ready.
Howard, do you have a comment?
I don't think this process was rushed. Nothing was rammed through. This is obviously a large decision that a district and a board has to make. You did wonderful work over the last few months getting information, both from the board and from the high school. So thank you very much, President Colan. But I see, based upon the comments and what Jackie just said and what Cynthia said earlier and Mark said, really have two issues. The major issue, I think, is what is our expectation from the board of what this person is? How is that going to fit in? You've alluded to it, and we've talked about it in bits and pieces over the last few months, but I think it needs to be part of the motion, to Mark's point. Cynthia talked about some of the criteria. Criteria can be changed, so we can discuss it more, but we could go with what we have possibly, and then over for the next year, for 2021, we could change it. So, so based on that, based on that, I withdraw my second.
Or we could just parse the vote, because in the informal conversations that we've had, I think all seven of us agree that we want a student on this board in some fashion. As a part, to your point, Cynthia, we value student voice greatly, and this would be one facet of it. And we could, I think, going forward, we could talk about other facets of elaborating on student voice. But what if tonight we vote to approve the student on board and then reconvene about particulars, if that needs a second vote?
I am all for student voice, but I get nervous when I hear student on the board because that, that's not the role here. Student liaison, different story. It needs to be defined before I can get to a comfort level to approve it. If we vote on this tonight, I will vote no, not because I don't believe in student voice, but because I don't know what I'm voting on.
So I can tell you that the MASB workshop does specifically address all of the legal concerns. So there is, there is resource and to help us get through that. That's not really, to me, that's not the highest hurdle. I think that can, it does need to be, we need to decide which are the things we're going to, you know, which kinds of meetings students will participate in and so on. But that has been addressed, there is information that's provided to us statewide.
Why can't we articulate that? The, you know, table is for right now. Articulate what Mark is looking for and what Cynthia just referred to in the paper, and then bring this back next meeting.
Okay.
Well, why don't we just take the vote? And then if it doesn't pass, we can bring it up at a later meeting. I'll just do a second, so we don't have even a motion on the table right now.
Well, I mean, discussing.
Well, no, I just, I just withdrew it, so. If you'd like a second.
I've made the motion.
Oh, you made the motion.
We have another.
Can you read the motion again, please?
I move that the Board of Education adopt the student liaison to the board proposal as presented.
It was presented at the last board meeting, when I had the one-page document. I went through the criteria, what the responsibilities would be, which I do have.
Yes.
So. Yes, I can amend and I can read it right now.
It's the same thing that's been posted.
Okay, I could read it. Purpose, school board liaison, purpose, to share the important student voice with Bloomfield Hills Schools through Board of Education membership and decision-making and incorporate the student perspective in district policy and strategic planning. Criteria for becoming a school board liaison. Commit to at least one year of being a school board liaison. GPA of at least 3.0. Be comfortable working as a team with seven elected trustees. Confident public speaker. Willingness to participate in meetings and events that are recorded. Ability to manage the time commitment, which includes reading information prepared for meetings. Commit to representing a large constituency of students and making sure that information is shared with them. Participate in training necessary to learn Board of Education duties and responsibilities. Application for board, for school board student liaison. A letter or email of intent to the superintendent along with written permission from parent guardian. Completion of an application. If more students apply than are needed, two students per year. Committee of the following would consist, each application selects a student liaison. School board committee, superintendent or designate, high school principal or designate. Board expectations. Develop ways to gather student feedback and initiate student concerns to the board, using channels that reach the students, convey information to the student population. Understand and follow guidelines of board behavior, including confidentiality, spokesperson, working as part of a team, conflicts of interest, punctuality, preparedness, chain of command. Comfortably speaking in public and occasionally in front of a large audience. Ability to commit time needed to the job. Respect for all people and issues addressed.
President Colan, that, that's the motion that's in the document in the, in Novus.
We needed to add this.
That's, that, you just read, no, no, no. You just read what was in the attachment to Novus.
Yes.
That was not Mark's question. What, what Trustee Bank is talking about is from our side. This is from the student's side that you just read. From our side, what meetings are they going to be attending? What is their roles and responsibilities from our side?
As, as needed, based on, project-based, as needed.
So if you look at this. So if you look at this as the analogy of the policy, right? And then the, the regs would get written out in the future.
So would this person be sitting at this table every meeting?
No.
What meetings would they be sitting here for?
If there was a critical, a critical issue that needed student voice to be at the table. And getting to Jennifer's point, we would write out the regulations as needed.
So, so as part, when the agenda committee meets, the agenda committee will look, will approve the agenda about a week beforehand and then as part of that agenda meeting, they will say this issue and this issue needs student voice, we will invite the student for next meeting?
Well, usually, usually we have, you know, things that are, that are mapped out within six to 12 months. So if we know that, let's say the policy was going to be talked about in advance, then we would say, you know, these specific issues, we get to the policy, go back, we need student voice.
If it gets done ahead of time, great, but definitely no later than the agenda meeting.
Correct.
So that would be the process. Are you comfortable with that, Mr. Bank?
So we're deciding when the student should have, this person would have voice and not have voice? I think that's a little insulting.
If we, if we. I'm sorry, go ahead.
You read in the first sentence, the purpose. You went through the criteria and then you went through a second set of criteria, but Howard had it exactly right. Their role in interacting with us. And I think we need to be able to map out expectations in advance so that they're reasonable expectations and, and so that we don't disappoint and not meet those expectations. To my business, we talk about managing expectations, but in this, I think it's creating false expecta, I'm worried about that. And that's why I didn't want us talking to the students before we figured out what we want. And it's not clear what we want, to me.
Well, first of all, no one talked to students.
Paul talked to Charlie.
No, Paul went into the student leadership class.
And talked to students.
Oh, well.
Wait, wait, I, I spoke with Charlie and.
Paul always goes into the student leadership class to talk with students.
Listen, I spoke with Charlie, we defined that, we got feedback, yes, we did get feedback from the students in terms of, you know, is it something that they're interested in? And the answer was yes. And I did work with, you know, the committee that I set up with the board, you know, to kind of define, and getting to Jennifer's point, it will, it will evolve in terms of, you know, through regulations in terms of, you know, how many meetings they need to go for BIC, how many FFLA meetings, you know, depending on what we're talking about. If you're saying I need to, you know, go back again and put together, you know, a one-pager in terms of, you know, defining that, you know, I'll go ahead and do that. I thought I did that in the past.
No, I don't, I mean, I think it's designed to be flexible because we've never had this before. And it will be, it will be something meaningful for the student and for the board.
I, I feel like the, I thought, I interpreted the vision of this is that our expectation was to simply give the cohort of students as they rotate through the experience of this, right? So I would think that any student we put on this board would have the prerogative of attending any of our meetings, right? We're not going to tell them you can come to this, you can't come to that. They come, they typically listen like, like an internship. They listen, they don't vote, and when required for serious issues of stakeholder-ness and communication, we, they are used for that purpose.
From what Jennifer's saying, obviously, we have different opinions. I think we need to table this or not have discussion. Get us all, get seven of us on, at least get four votes of whatever it is and then bring back to the table.
Okay, so we, should we, are we ready to vote on whether it exists or not? Or are we going to wait on that vote?
What it looks like. And you don't say, okay, we're going to create a new officer position on the board and then later we'll give it some responsibilities. You got to know what you're voting on.
Well, we're creating it with the intention that it will evolve into something that's become something mutually beneficial.
But I also want to make sure.
Is there a timeline that, is that we have to make this decision tonight? Is there a reason because of, from the, from the high school side?
Why does it have to be denied? Why don't we have another meeting?
Right, exactly.
There's certain issues internal to the high school where the proper chain would be if there's a concern within the high school, they would go to Charlie and his team. There's other things in our role as developing policy for the district, making policy decisions, hiring superintendents, reviewing superintendents, you know, going through budgets. And I think it needs to be clear what, you know, still goes to Charlie and what comes to us, that this doesn't circumvent, you know, the chain of, exactly what the way to put it.
That's important. I thought.
Well, no, I think from, from Charlie's perspective, I don't think it does. I think he's excited to work with the students and to, and to work with us, you know, as a board to kind of develop this. And the other districts that are doing it, like Philadelphia and other districts, it is, it is evolving. It's, it's new in a lot of districts. It is evolving in terms of, yes, they're invited to come to all meetings, will it be mandatory? No, but, and we, you know, again, this, this is something that's relatively new out there. But student voice is important and I think we all agree that student voice is important. And then as a board, you know, we can evolve and kind of, you know, work through this. We can vote on it and still work through what the parameters are.
But I don't understand what's a rush, though. I'm, I'm kind of feeling like, why, why are we rushing? If, if we can just wait and get everybody on board, what, why are we rushing? Why do we have to do it today?
I don't feel it's a rush.
I know, I know, I know, Lisa, you don't feel it's a rush, but why are we, why don't we wait a little bit and get more people on board?
If we put around the agenda for May 23rd, that would still give us enough time to put the structure in place for the fall.
I'll put together, I'll put together another, you know, I'll go more detail.
Well, all right, if that's going to happen, though, can we be clear on what are the expectations that we want Paul to come back to us with in terms of more specificity? Because we're not meeting again about this until after the 23rd. So if we're going to postpone a vote, what do we expect?
How about we have Mark put together the board.
Students are, what they're participating in. I also wanted to be clear, I also wanted to be clear, what is not the role of this liaison? Because there's still certain things that go through the chain of, the command at the high school. And I think it needs to be, maybe there's not a bright line, but I think it needs to be spelled out that this, you know, the board does these things, this student liaison would be engaging in discussions on this, but not those. And I think we need to spell that out.
And I think what Mark is saying, there could be some non-negotiables that will never change and there could be some things that will evolve. That's fine.
Well, I mean, I also think we have to recognize that it's difficult to create a document that's going to anticipate for every situation so that things are going to pop up, whether we have a very long document after months of collaboration or whether we approve something general that we can adapt.
I will, I will go back and I will work on it, I will work on a document, I work with our, you know, my fellow board colleagues and circulate around to clearly define as best I can under the parameters, expectations.
We're going to have a study session on the invitation or RFP, call it what you want. Maybe we allow, you know, hour and a half for that and then 30 minutes, 45 minutes for this.
Go beyond the sub, the task force now to the full board? I think that's a problem.
Paul's going to the M A S B workshop, I don't know what the, don't remember.
It's in June.
Okay. Because I think when you go there with as much information as you already have, you will be able to ask some great questions because you're not walking there. For when I went there, I had not any experience with it. I, I think that if you wait to create the more detailed document, that you will have a lot more resource having gone to that workshop.
I will go back and work, again, I will go back, we'll, you know, it's fine, we could table this discussion with the idea, we all agree that student voice is important. I will go, I will go back and continue to work.
That's fine. We're tabling until the 23rd or until the June M A S B workshop?
I'll come up with something on the 23rd and then again.
Did you say there's a study session, though?
Study session.
An agreement that we're going to have relative to the superintendent's search firm and to the extent that we allow two hours for that study session or an hour and a half, whatever we can tack on, 30 minutes, 45 minutes for this and accomplish both probably easily within two hours.
Yeah, the M A S B conferences for this specifically is June 4th.
Yes, I'll be there. Okay. All right.
All right, so I guess do I have to withdraw the motion?
No, it wasn't second.
It was in second. So closing comments, any closing comments? Motion for adjourned?
I moved.
Move.